Okay, at 7:38 in the PM, and we will continue, or actually convene, the City Council Regular Session Meeting for Monday, April 18th, 2011. And Mr. Black, do you have anything to report out from closed session?
Nothing, no final report from closed session, or no final actions were taken in closed session.
Okay, and Madam Clerk, would you let the...
Record reflect that all members are here?
Thank you. I take the words right out of my mouth.
She's starting to complete your sentences, Mayor Slert.
Okay, I would ask Ms. Westfall if she would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance at this time?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to have, in acknowledgements, a proclamation supporting the designation of April 2011 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I will read that proclamation. The proclamation supporting the designation of April 2011 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas the Crescent City recognizes that every moment of a child's life is an opportunity to learn, and that the quality of these experiences may determine whether a child succeeds in school or in life, and that all children need caring and loving adults in their lives, and whereas, the city acknowledges that our children are our greatest resources, and that our future will be determined by their innovative talents, ideas, and leadership. And whereas, the role of our people is to accept the responsibility of ensuring that every child experiences an environment at home and childcare and at school that will promote the best possible development, and whereas, all communities have the responsibility of offering parent education, parents the education support and the skills needed to provide healthy, safe, and nurturing homes for their children. Now therefore, it be resolved that the City Council of Crescent City hereby proclaims the month of April 2011 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and urges the community to support the efforts of the Delnort Child Abuse Prevention Council, First Five Delnort Children and Families Commission, the Delnort Child Care Council, the Delnort County Juvenile Court, CASA of Delnort, Delnort County Health and Human Services, Licensed Foster Care Homes, public and private agencies and programs advocating for children in Crescent City, and parents who already provide a safe, loving, and nurturing environment to their children, free of any outside intervention, and it's signed by myself, Mayor. And I'm going to offer this to Bernadette Johnson. Would you like to offer?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for doing this, and I think it's really important to read the words out loud. There's many wonderful things happening in this community. Also like to share, if you didn't know already, that the Youth and Family Fair was a huge success, and the most attendees that we've had thus far, and we expect that to continue to grow as a wonderful free event for the families in our community. So, thank you so much for all you do, and I look forward to reporting for you next year as well. And just a tiny point of clarification, April is Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. It's somewhat of a joke that's not that funny, that, you know, every day is a time that we need to prevent child abuse, and we're just trying to bring it to the awareness in the month of April, but every other month counts too.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bernadette.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will move to the consent calendar for approval of the regular meeting minutes of April 4th for the Crescent City Council meeting, and the approval of warrant claims list for the period of April 5th through April 18th, 2011, and then approval of the bi-weekly payroll reports for the period ending April 9th, paid April 15th, 2011.
Second.
Have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion carries unanimously. So we will adjourn now to the Redevelopment Agency. And Madam Clerk, would you have the record reflect that the Chair and the Directors are all present?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there any public comment for the Redevelopment Agency? Mr. Miles.
I want to thank Jim for explaining to me why the bids haven't gone out to tear down the landing. And I hope that maybe by the end of May, the specs could be sent to the different contractors, and let's get the breezeway finally tore down before the 4th of July. Also, I'm aware of something else, and I think it would be a good opportunity to do something. Eric Weir and Jim are going to get the assistance of the inmates from Alder Camp to come in the downtown area and do some cleanup. I would hope that we take a look in two locations, the redevelopment area where the fountain is, and the area where the clock is, but there's one more area. My city owns, because of the previous source of city water, urban forest over by the cemetery. I would hope my city, Alder Camp, would do a lot of cleanup in the urban forest, and get ahold of Jerry Cochran. Huh? No, I know it isn't redevelopment, but Mr. Cochran works with our veteran cemetery. If you've been in our cemetery lately, it's not... It's the weather. And I would hope my city, you know, sometimes I think my city and my county should look at joining their parks and rec department, because there's a lot that needs to be done.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Any other public comment? Okay, we have the consent calendar for the Redevelopment Agency, approval of the regular meeting minutes, March 21st, 2011, the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency, and the approval of warrant claims list of March 22nd, 2011 through April 18th, 2011.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Okay, we have no executive directors' report, no business items, no public hearing, no new business, and so we will adjourn. I'm sorry?
Have a question.
Yes, please.
What is the status of tsunami landing?
Okay, what we're doing is, along with everything else, we're putting the specifications and plans together to tear it down, so... It's just a matter of getting that done while we're trying to get everything else taken care of. And we had a lot of work we were doing with Prop 40 projects and getting that completed, and now we're concentrating not only on getting the budget done, but also getting tsunami landing contract done. And we are also getting a contract out on Front Street, which was Bob once, so...
Right.
It's just...
I'd just like to see it done before summer's over.
Yeah, I know, me too.
Okay, thanks.
And spending a little time at the county also.
Well, yeah, and I, right now, have been the one working on those specs to get the plant, that project on the tsunami landing, so I have... I don't have as many days to do it, but I think all in all, it does work out for me, working at the county. That seems to be working out fine.
Moving ahead. Thanks, Jim. Okay, so we'll adjourn the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency and reconvene as the City Council, and the next Redevelopment Agency meeting will be May 16th, 2011. So reconvening the City Council, we will have a public hearing, and we will conduct a public hearing to consider waive the full reading and read by title only, and adopt ordinance number 762, an ordinance of the City of Crescent City amending Chapter 17.023.030-J and 17.023.35, Section B, of Title 17 of the Crescent City Municipal Code, An Amendment to the Commercial Waterfront District.
As you recall, we brought this forward last month. This was, you just said, it was the amendment to the Commercial Waterfront District to allow light manufacturing uses. I have a whole lot of new information to add. If there's any questions, I'll entertain those at this time.
Okay. Any questions, clarifications on the council's part?
No, I just wanted for the public to know that this is by permit only, and that I had spoken with someone in the community concerned about us using that facility that we're proposing this amendment for. She was concerned that it was taking away from Front Street area. And so I appreciated her comments, but I let her know that we have had that building vacant for years, and it's become a blighted building. This will give us an opportunity for living wage jobs, and that it is a good change for the city, because it has done a couple of things. It's gotten, it'll get rid of the blighted building, and it'll bring jobs into the community. But, and no one else had come forward to do anything else with the building, so we couldn't let it sit there forever.
Well said. Thank you. Is there any other questions? Okay, is there any public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment, back to the council.
I would move to approve ordinance 762, amending Chapter 7.023.030-J and 1702335-B, Title 17 of the Crescent City Municipal Code, amending the Community Waterfront District, Commercial Waterfront District.
I'll second that.
Okay, have a motion in second. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Westfall? Councilmember Shaloon?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes. So the motion carries unanimously? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question on Mr. Taylor regarding the project?
Please.
I noticed on the upcoming planning commission meeting that that project was taken off until next month. Is there a problem, or is it just...
No problem. The project proponents had some questions about the initial study, and they asked to make some comments, so we made some changes. But in doing so, we have to go out and post it again for the 21-day review period.
So it's back?
They were fine with that, so had to push it out to the next.
So it's on track, though?
Correct.
Okay. That's good news.
Very good. Thank you.
And it was with applicant's request that we permitted?
Good. Okay, so at this time, we will, we have no reports, so we have public comment, period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City, comments of public interest, or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion on it or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to as staff or appropriate action, which may include placement on future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Public comment. Mr. Miles?
Well, this is my last public comment, because I'm getting hungry, my stomach's rattling. I would hope that my city would enter into a real discussion, but your time is around the corner. Currently, my city funds two organizations. And tourism is an economic generator of this community. How much, I think, is in question. What bothers me, and I have to be nice about this, can we afford, in these tight budget times, to fund both the Tourist Bureau and the Chamber of Commerce? And what should be the role of those two different organizations? And I'd like to remind you what Councilman Dennis Byrne said. Can you... Where's their contribution? I kind of have a solution. I don't think Alan Funk would like me right now, because I'm going to be very blunt. He killed the TOT loan proposal in this community. If my Chamber Commerce and Tourist Bureau really want funding, I think at the next direction, both the county and the city, should put the TOT proposal back to the voters and let the voters vote again. We know, at least I know, that the motel and the hotel and some of the business element killed that. They shot themselves in the foot. And we need police protection, fire protection, streetlights, and the services that this community needs to move ahead. And the only way we fund that is through our TOT. It's time they step up to the plate.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. And we'll move to continuing business item number 11. We will consider waive the full reading, read by title only, and adopt ordinance number 760 entitled, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, Delnort County, State of California, Adopting Zoning Code Amendment 11-01 to Make Various Changes to the City's Municipal Code as Required by the California Coastal Commission and Agreed to by the City Council in conjunction with Certification of the Local Coastal Program, Amendment Number CRC-MAJ-1-03, The LCP Update, as provisionally approved by the California Coastal Commission, and furthermore, finding the approval of the Zoning Code Amendment excerpt exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 21080.9 of the California Environmental Quality Act, as the Coastal Commission has found that approval of the LCP with the incorporation of suggested modifications would not result in significant environmental impact pursuant to SEQA.
Very eloquently put. And you know, this has been brought several times already. This is amending our LCP update, so again, I don't have a whole lot new to add to this. So if there's any questions, I'll take those at this time.
Any questions on the part of the council? Clarifications?
I'd just like to say I was happy to see the county stood up to the Coastal Commission and voted no.
Thank you. Mr. Black, anything off?
This is second reading and adoption.
Okay. So we've had our second reading. Is there a motion?
I'll move. We need a motion. Somebody needs to move.
Yeah, I'll move that we waive the full reading and adopt ordinance 760.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in second. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaloon?
No.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes. So the motion carries with a vote of four to one. At this time, there's no new business, so we will move to the council items legislative matters. Mr. Black, anything offhand?
Uh, no.
Anybody from the council regarding legislative matters?
Just to remind you that the Senator Lamalfa will be here tomorrow. He's having a ribbon cutting at his office in the Mason Mall at 5:45, and then a town hall meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building Wednesday evening from 5:00 to 7:00. And he's been very supportive of our community, and I encourage you, if you have not had the chance, to stop by and meet him.
I would ditto that. Okay, reports. Mr. Ania?
Yes, it's been almost two weeks ago now, but I attended the League of California Public Safety Committee meeting in, let me think, the word was, not Long Beach, but Ontario. Town easy to forget. The, that meeting is probably the, one of the most crucial that the League of California has. New rules and new legislation. As you know, that Governor Brown, and the legislature passed, Governor Brown signed, I don't remember the bill number, but that's to reduce our prisons, dump them to the county jail, which the jail is full, get rid of parole as we know it, to put parolees on the street. He signed that bill, and he had a lot of opposition from many public safety members. And he decided that even though he signed that bill, he's not going to enforce it, because there's no funding mechanism in place. So he may try to force us to raise our vehicle fees again, to raise the taxes again, and then have the people vote in November, after he promised he would never do that. So right now, it's in limbo. But how that affects us is, we don't have, our booking fees right now are paid for by the, by, through state. That's on the table. Our COPS funding is through the state. If we lose our booking fees, in fact, we, in fact, we were told to suggest to every city to put booking fees in our budget. And that's probably going to be thousands and thousands of dollars that we're going to have to add to our budget now. Maybe we'll take it out later, if they go back and start paying the booking fees again. And the other thing is the COPS funding, that'll go away with new funding. What we have now would stay until it expires in two or three years. And so that's, that's, we talked a lot about that. And we voted unanimously, of the 60 people that were there, many council members from throughout the state, we voted unanimously for the California League of Cities to consider having some legislators draft a bill that would consider the economic and fiscal impact on each county and each city in the state before this bill is enacted, what it would cost us to do that, what it would cost the community. And so we passed that unanimously. It's going to the League's board. I hope to hear that any day now, if they're going to approve that or not, which we think they will. And then it will go to legislatures that would carry that bill as an emergency bill to stop the parolees from being released into our community, and to stop putting state prisoners in our county jail, which is already full. And we're just met one of many counties where the jail is full. Now, I suggested that, you know, we can do all that. So give us the funding, and we'll build our jail bigger. Puts more people to work, it puts construction works to work, and we can have more correctional officers at our county jail. So just write us a check, we'll tell you how much it is. I'll check with the county, and they'll let us know, and they're not willing to consider that one.
Well, I read, just, I think, like, a week and a half ago, that the COPS funding had overall support.
But it still hasn't been, it has overall support, but they want to take the funding by keeping fees that they have now. So that hasn't, it hasn't passed them.
The state parole isn't doing a very good job in the first place. I have a friend in Humboldt County, his son was killed, and one of his wife's good friend's daughters was killed in Humboldt County, and the mother of the daughter was in the grocery store line and turned around and saw the man that killed her daughter. And she had never been notified, and they're supposed to get 30 days.
Yeah. There's problems with parole, they've reduced their staff. A parolee just shot an officer the other night in Palm Springs and killed the police dog. That was a parolee at large that should have been brought in. Can you imagine when they release them to our community? The other meeting I attended last week, along with Catherine, and Mayor Slert was the Transportation Committee, and we're working on things there, too. I don't have anything to report on that.
Good report. Thank you, Mr. Ania. Mayor Protem Murray?
Thank you. I had quite a few items I attended. I don't have any legislative matters, but I attended Earth Day on Saturday, and the Solid Waste Joint Powers Authority meeting, the Local Transportation Commission meeting, and we have adopted the, we approved funding for OES to assist with their evacuation for the tsunami signs throughout the county.
Yes, thank you. Forgot that.
I attended the Senior Center Meeting, the IGRC, the Economic Summit that the Chamber hosted, and the Retirement Party for Liz McGee.
Oh, did you?
Pardon?
Did you go there?
Janine was there, too. But tomorrow night, I won't be able to go to... But tomorrow night, I won't be able to go to the senator's ribbon cutting because I'm going to be at a Building Healthy Communities meeting down in Clamath.
Mayor Slert, if I could add something to that transportation that Catherine said. There's going to be some new signs coming out about tsunami and the path, the path to go to. And I was wondering, Jim, when those signs, they're going to, OES is going to select the area to put the signs, but I was wondering if we have, like, streetlight poles or a pole nearby, maybe we can use that pole instead of having to put new pole in the ground?
Yeah. We are using these poles a lot of that to have existing poles that are in there that have options.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Hey, Catherine, do you have any thing to report on the senior center? Is anything?
No, there's nothing new. We have some new board members and our interim, interim executive director is Charlene Maisy.
I was going to just have a little bit of input into the tsunami signs. When we put them on the streets, we might want to look at streets that don't have power poles on them.
Yeah, I was thinking of light poles, but, yeah.
Good idea.
Every, every one of our streets have light poles.
I've had this conversation, but I think it's, we try to get the majority of the people to come up the, the streets that don't say power poles.
Yeah, not power poles. I was thinking of the light poles because all of our streets have light poles.
Right.
Not power poles.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Westfall?
Uh, no, nothing.
Okay. Ms. Shalong?
Saturday, we had our city manager interviews and wanted to say thank you to the community panel that sat in, Jay Serena and Bill Renfro and Laura Haben and Gary Milliman from Brookings. And we were successful in all of us having the top number one person, and so we're moving forward with that, and hopefully we'll have some news to report, good news to report Attended the Del Norte Solid Waste Management Authority meeting, also attended a meeting with Solid Waste and the city to talk about our city sludge. Attended the news briefing at the harbor as the Department of Fish and Game and Coast Guard exited. They had a news briefing and Mr. Slert was unavailable, but I was there and gave a report on behalf of the city. There were five of us there in total. And just can't say enough about the work that was done in our harbor in that 30-day period by the Coast Guard and the Fish and Game. They were very cooperative and very helpful. We had an airport meeting. Our public hearings took place for the runway safety areas, so we're moving forward with RFQs on that project. Attended the Americas Wild Rivers Coast Five Chamber Mixer out at Lucky Seven Casino's new Talawa Event Center. Absolutely beautiful building. If you get a chance, you should check it out. And congratulations to Jeff Ferguson, who was chosen as the, what was his title? I think he was, like, Citizen of the Year or something. It's not, that wasn't the title of it, but for doing good things. And then also Johnston's Gift Garden Home was chosen as the number one customer service business. So congratulations to them. Let's see. This weekend, Saturday, for those of you that missed the earlier meeting, we have the tsunami fundraiser at the fairgrounds from 11:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. And there's going to be a spaghetti feed, live music all day long. Jeff Jolly, a good friend of mine, is coming in from San Francisco. His band, he plays all over the Bay Area, plus in Europe. And then Love and Theft, an up-and-coming country music band from Nashville is coming, and they're all playing for free. And I think that's just an amazing, you know, thing that happens right here in our country. Also, I already mentioned Lamalfa. Next week, just in case anybody's interested, we have our ad hoc committee meeting for the Del Norte Solid Waste Management Association on the 26th. The tri-agency meeting is on the 27th. May 5th, our airport JPA board will be meeting in Brookings, so we're going on the road. So that'll be nice. After that, we're going to meet with Gary Milliman and talk to him about our regional economic development cooperation. May 13th, Mr. Slert, if it's not on your radar, is the Redwood Empire Division meeting for the California cities, and that's going to take place in Ukiah. And I think that you're our representative, if I remember right. And I think that's about it. It's spring break, the kids are out, so be safe, and I hope everybody has a nice Easter.
Thank you. I also attended the Wild Rivers Chamber Mixer, which was, I think, very successful. They've got a beautiful new facility. In the architectural profession, we'd say it has a nice fit and finish. Also attended the board, the bid monthly board meeting. The Elk Valley Rancheria, we had an ad hoc committee meeting. We had a disaster mitigation committee meeting. And also attended the local transportation commission meeting and then IGRC meeting. And then, as Mishalong noted, we had the city manager interviews with the council and the community groups on Saturday past. So that represents what I attended. And then I also wanted to remind folks about Senator Doug Lamalfa being here. He's very involved and hands-on with our community and very supportive. So as Mishalong said, if you haven't met him, it'd be a great chance to get to meet him.
Oh, and Charles and I also, just so the rest of the council knows, had a CDBG ad hoc committee meeting today, and we are looking at how to fund the beachfront park plan as well as the possible relocation of the fire hall out of the tsunami runoff, run-up.
Very good. That was the last meeting.
Yeah.
And then, um...
The runoff after.
Yeah.
And then I wanted to report that some may not know that the city in the Marine Mammal Center was not successful in achieving the $7 million grant for the new educational facility. So that's a pain in the heart of our community, and we have a building design available for anybody who's interested. Also, I'd like to acknowledge my appreciation for President Obama identifying us as a federal disaster designation for our community. It's going to make a huge difference. It won't get us all the way there, but it gets us a lot more there. And then I guess I was going to offer potentially that the council consider giving a directive to the city manager with the notification this past week of the discovery of Justin Weber's body, the victim of the March 11th Crescent City tsunami event. I would like to propose that the city and/or the harbor consider an appropriate local memorial in his honor, maybe to be incorporated in beachfront park master plan scheme of things and/or the harbor as they're moving into their design venture at this time. But I think it'd be an appropriate symbol on the part of the city. Would that be a directive that you could support?
Sure. Wouldn't, I'm fine with it, but wouldn't you normally do that in the town that they're lost in, like, Clamath?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I just thought that it had a merit to consider it since it happened here.
Well, we could have a discussion about that. We could bring back a proposal. I think we're open to, it's an event, was it a community event, that we put an appropriate memorial or plaque or something within beachfront park or wherever, or whatever. I mean, it did occur in Clamath, but hopefully there's not much weight there in the mouth of to put something there, but there's a mouth change as well every so many years.
I saw the interview with his mom on Channel 3, and it was really heartbreaking, so I think it's a nice idea.
Let us think about it and maybe come back with some ideas.
Very good. Thank you. So with that, we will adjourn the regular council meeting, and the next council meeting would be May 2nd, Monday, at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you.